Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry we're starting just a few minutes late, but we had some last-minute recognition items to work on. So that's why we're just a little bit late. I'd like to call our regular board meeting to order on April 15th, 2025 at 6:35 PM. Our pledges of allegiance, we're going to have a special treat tonight. Williams Ledger, a group, is going to lead our pledges. And then Mr. Mike Wilburn will give the invocation. If you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful to be in a land where we can meet together freely. We thank you, Father, for the men and women who have given their lives that we might enjoy this freedom. We thank you, Father, for the staff of Coppers Cove ISD. And we thank you for the dedication they have. And we pray, Father, the decision we make tonight would be in accordance with your will. First and foremost, we ask it. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Every student, every day, that's the Williams Ledger way. Make yourself and the people you love proud today.
Thank y'all so much. That was great. All right, now we are going to read our mission statement.
The mission of Coppers Cove ISD is to provide exceptional opportunities for each student through exemplary instruction which inspires academic success, personal excellence, and responsible citizenship.
All right, and this is citizen comment time. And Bradley Vaughn is going to talk to us. He lives at 1503 East Robertson Avenue. And he's going to talk about 38.022, Raptor, and new sport. You've been busy, haven't you? Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I thought we'd settled this a few years back. Texas Education Code 38.022, it covers the identification requirements for entering school district buildings, along with school district legal and local policy GKC. It is derived from the Texas Education Code 38.022. I was recently refused entry into a building for a meeting and was told, "I don't care about the state, the education code. I follow board policy." Well, guess what? The board policy follows directly from Education Code 38.022. I complied with 38.022, local legal board policy GKC, and was still refused entry. I identified it, left it alone, and went away because I thought we dealt with this a few years ago. On to my other thing. Raptor. I recently did a records request. How many students or how often do students come to this building? I don't care how many or how often, honestly. Just how or do students come here? We use Raptor in this building to check everybody's ID like we do at school. But there's no students here. What's the use of having a Raptor here if there's no students we're trying to protect? Because I understand Raptors are used to pull up pedophiles. But if there's no students here, why are we enforcing Raptor here when we could do away with that and allow parents, adults, to intermix with each other? That's just a question I have. Because we sure don't do Raptor at any sporting events. And there's a lot of students and a lot of parents or adults there. But if there's no students that come here, why do we enforce Raptor in this building? On to our third thing, new sport. I actually thought about doing this a few years ago, or last year, didn't bring it up. Looked a little more into it. Skeet shooting, trap shooting. There's 32 school districts or schools in the state of Texas that participate in skeet shooting, clay pigeons. They don't just compete state level. They actually compete nationally with over 1,000 different schools. And 10,000 other students are involved. Per the state website for Texas, anywhere from 6th grade to 12th grade is qualified to join in with skeet shooting. Just an idea for another school sport that some students don't know about. They may not be interested in playing football, basketball, wrestling, cheerleading, volleyball. Skeet shooting might be another option. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. And by the way, if you notice, we don't answer because that's a state, that's a state thing that we're not allowed to talk to the person who brings this information. We listen to it. And if someone would like to bring something later to the agenda or if one of our administrators would like to talk to Mr. Vaughn, then that's perfectly fine. But we are not allowed to ask questions or make comments while someone's up for citizen's comment. So that's, those are the rules. Now we have what we call good things. And first of all, we have staff recognition. So if everybody would go down to the...
Okay, hopefully, everybody can hear me a little bit better this time. And don't worry, we checked the batteries after last month. Our first recognition tonight, we're going to start with staff recognitions. We have three groups of staff recognitions tonight. First, the Coppers Cove ISD Business Services Office, which recently was awarded the TASBO Award of Merit from the Texas Association of School Business Officials for the second year in a row. This award represents its effort to follow state purchasing guidelines that are set for school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education service centers by the state Texas Education Agency. Much of the evaluation is based on those purchasing guidelines identified by the legislature beginning in the mid-1990s. So congratulations to the CCISD Business Office. Congratulations. Thank you. Our next group of recognitions, there are five campuses, all of them elementary schools, that were recently awarded Best Elementary School in Texas by the U.S. News &amp; World Report. All five of these campuses have appeared on the list for the second year in a row. We're going to welcome each campus up individually for their picture. We'll start with Clement Parsons Elementary School, which ranked in the top 1,700 with 50% of students proficient or better in math and 52% in reading. This ranked more than 6,000 elementary schools across the state. Got it? Thank you. Our next camp is being recognized, Hattie Halsted Elementary School, which was ranked 1,673rd in the state with 47% of students proficient or better in math and 52% in reading. Okay, congratulations. Our next camp is being recognized, Fairview Jewel Elementary School. Checked in at 1,124th in the state with 47% of students at or above proficient in math and 57% in reading. Congratulations. Next camp is to be recognized, Martin Walker Elementary School, which checked in at 898th in the state with 52% of students at or above proficient in math and 64% in reading. Thank you. Congratulations. Also, just so everyone understands, because it was just explained to me, proficient is the equivalent to meets on your star test, so it is a mark above passing. House Creek Elementary topped the list for schools in Coppers Cove ISD, coming in at 367th in the state out of the more than 6,000 rated with 68% of its students at or above proficient in both math and reading. All right, congratulations. Our next and final staff recognition tonight relates to the United Way Campaign, which recently wrapped up. It ended in March with the annual award ceremony and luncheon. As a district, Coppers Cove ISD was awarded for raising $33,622 in total, all from staff donations. The top three campuses will be individually recognized tonight as well. And we have certificates for them. Dr. Hawkins is holding the plaque that the local United Way presented to us last month. Onto the campus. See, I thought they were scraping the bottom of the barrel. Okay, so for the staff recognitions, SC Lee Junior High was third in the district with $5,476 raised. Three, two, one. Congratulations. In second place, House Creek Elementary School, which came in at $5,481. Thank you. Congratulations. And if you've been to these meetings when we've recognized United Way campuses before, you're not going to be surprised by who finished in first place. Williams Ledger, for however many years in a row it is, came in first place, raising $11,460. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Thank y'all. Okay, on to student recognitions tonight. We're going to start with Coppers Cove Junior High, where in March, several students from the chess team competed in the state tournament in Lewisville, Texas, near Dallas, and came home as a team state champion. And some individuals came home with some hardware as well. And so we'll call everybody up and we'll take one group photo at the end. We have certificates for all the individual places as well as a team certificate for y'all. Mr. Shannon. Brandon Bielecki came in first place in the state individually. Ryder Shannon came in second place in the state. Aiden Litchford finished fourth in the state. Sawyer Sewell placed fifth. Elijah Swayby placed eighth. And we have two who received honorable mention honors. It's State Liam Hill and Ethan Testa. All right, everyone, right here. All right, everyone, right here. Hold on, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right. Thank y'all very much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for supporting us.
Of course. Okay, our next student recognition, as we let everybody else file out, comes from Coppers Cove High School, where the Lady Dog Soccer Team qualified once again for the UIL State Playoffs out of District 12 6A, with a whole host of all district honorees, including Jenna Carlson, Allison Crawley, Maggie Crawley, Amaya Griffin, Lena Ledger, Isabel Orta, Kai and Ramos, Eileen Rodarte, Emma Sheon, Emily Tacloban, Tasne Torres, and Capri Huggins. Congratulations. All right, everyone, right here. Right here, guys. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Our next recognition comes from SC Lee Junior High and is a choir recognition. Ava Chanpoing was recently selected to be part of the Region 8 Treble Choir. Congratulations. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Every year, as part of the Adopt a Unit and Adopt a School program that we participate in with Fort Cavasos, campuses across the district take part in the Youth Environmental Ambassadors Program with the Centex Sustainability Communities Partnership. This year, four campuses received honors, including three who were able to be here tonight. We have a fourth. There was an issue in the communication. We've already settled it, and they'll be at May's meeting. So we'll get all of them in. And so we'd like to congratulate the following student councils who are here tonight. We'll start with Crossroads High School. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Congratulations. The next student council that won awards from the Centex Sustainable Communities Partnership and is here tonight is Fairview Miss Jewel Elementary School. All right, everyone, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right, congratulations. Thank y'all. All right, just one second. The next student council we're going to recognize not only won awards from the Centex Sustainable Communities Partnership, but also won a few others that we'd like to recognize them for tonight, including the Tepsa Student Leadership Award and the NAESP Honor Student Council Excellence Award, which recognizes student councils that have demonstrated excellence in community service, student leadership, and citizenship in school spirit. Congratulations to the Martin Walker Elementary School. Just a little bit. If we can just act like we're friends. All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right, congratulations. Thank y'all. Okay, our next several recognitions, no surprise, are from the Coppers Cove High School Pride of Cove Band, which continues to achieve recognition. This time in the UIL Region 8 Solo and Ensemble Contest, where Cove had 55 soloists participate, 23 received a first division rating, and 10 not only received a one, but advanced to the state solo and ensemble contest. We also had 23 ensembles participate, with ensembles receiving a one, and 12 ensembles advancing to state. The students receiving a one and advancing to state, starting with the soloist qualifiers, will be Santiago Bautista, who earned a one for his clarinet solo and advanced to the state solo and ensemble contest. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Gabriel Castillo earned a one for his French horn solo and advanced to the state solo and ensemble. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Benny Wildbacher earned a one for his tuba solo and advanced to the state solo and ensemble. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Mason Lindeman earned a one on his marimba solo and advanced to the state solo and ensemble contest. Not here. Also earning a one, Kai Huen, who earned a one on his xylophone solo and advanced to the state solo and ensemble. Three, two, one. Hold on, let me turn the page. Isaac Martinez also earned a one on his marimba solo and advanced to the state solo and ensemble. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Emma Sheon earned a one on her marimba solo and advanced to the state solo and ensemble. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. The final soloist who was able to make it tonight, Brenda Thomas, who earned a one for her tenor steel drum solo and advanced to the state solo and ensemble. Three, two, one. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Soloists who were not able to make it tonight and advanced to state as well were John Hofter Von Heidi on euphonium, Tyler Lee on vibraphone, and Mason Lindeman, who we announced as well. On to ensembles who have qualified for the state solo and ensemble contest. We have a mixed clarinet quartet, including Santiago Bautista, Heston Cardoza, David McComas, and Dylan Rolfe, who earned a one and advanced to the state solo and ensemble. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Another mixed clarinet quartet received a first division rating and advanced to the state solo and ensemble contest, including Madeline Gores, Damian Hernandez, Jana Morris, and Riley Winkleman. All right, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right, congratulations. A saxophone quartet that earned a first division rating and advanced to state solo and ensemble contest includes Jacob Highslop, Dylan Peacock, Lydia Schultz, and Carl Wells. and ensemble contest includes Jacob Highslop, Dylan Peacock, Lydia Schultz, and Carl Wells. Right here. Three, two, one. Another saxophone quartet that received a First Division rating and advanced to the state solo and ensemble contest includes Ava Adams, Amaya Griffin, Kayanne Ramos, and All right, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Look left. There was also a flute choir that had earned a one and advanced to state solo and ensemble contest this year, which included Victoria Andrade, Emma Duncan, Lily Morris, Abigail Ms. Manning, can you take a step to your right, right there? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. There is a trombone quartet that advanced to state solo and ensemble, earning a one on their performance at Region as well, including Jack Harrison, Ian McGuire, Aaron Rogers, Three, two, one. Three, two, one. There was a tuba and euphonium quartet that earned a one and advanced to state solo and ensemble contest, Noah Cisneros, Isaiah Fawcett, Christopher James, and Tayshaun Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Our final ensemble that was able to be here tonight, Gabriel Castillo, Zariah Davis, Isaiah Fawcett, Aaron Rogers, and Cheyenne West earned a one in their brass quintet and advanced to the state solo and ensemble contest. All right, everyone, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Look down and left. Congratulations. Thank you. Mr. Stewart, is that everybody? Mr. Stewart, did we get everybody? We got everybody. We do have a few ensembles that were not able to make it tonight. There was a flute trio of Emma Duncan, Keegan Sullivan, and Leilani Thompson that advanced to state. There was a saxophone quartet of Kayanne Ramos, Lydia Schultz, Micah Smith, and Jaden Thomas. There was a trumpet trio of Logan Barth, Aiden Nunez, and Khalil Vilts. A French horn quartet of Yun Song Lozano, Torrin McHugh, Katie Pack, and Mari Sol Rosas advanced as well.
You didn't give that heavy metal stick one away, did you?
No.
Okay. Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah. As I always say, that's the best part of our meeting, getting to see all the staff and student recognition. It's just wonderful. And lots of it tonight, so that's great. All right. Our next item is our long consent agenda, so y'all be patient with me while I read what's on our consent agenda tonight. We have the Board of Trustees' meeting minutes for our workshop meeting, March 3, 2025, our regular meeting, March 4, 2025, a special meeting, March 27, 2025. We have several items exceeding $25,000. First, we have the purchase of 304 Student Technology Chromebooks. It's Texas DIR-TSO-3763, and it's for $102,834.08, and it's from budgeted technology funds. We also have a purchase of a 2025 F-250 Crew Cab for the CTE Ag Program at CCHS. This is from Shastang Ford, and it's for $50,387, and it's also budgeted funds. We have repair of the roof at Coppers Cove High School, and this is Honey's Roofing LLC, a TIPS Contract #24060402, and it's for $265,950, and that comes from fund balance. We also have purchase replacement marquee for Hedy Halsted Elementary School, and this is Daktronics Quote #867445-1 for $26,784, and this is budgeted funds. We have renewing of Capturing Kids' Hearts for Secondary Campus Staff, and it's TIPS 210301 Academic Curriculum for $138,050, and this is from budgeted funds. We have renewal of Power School Schoology Learning Management System for grades K through 12, and this is TIPS RF 210101, May of '26, and it's for $39,804. Again, budgeted funds. We also have Student Accident Insurance Program, and under Finance, we have a few budget amendments. We have the monthly and quarterly financial report, and consider and approve financial statements and payment of bills. We also have the Letter of Engagement with Singleton Clark &amp; Company, Independent Financial Auditor for CCISD, and consider and approve the membership for the Student Health Advisory Council, also known as our SHAC Committee for Coppers Cove ISD, and will consider and approve the submission of the Instructional Materials Allotment Antique Certification for the 2025-2026 School Year. We have consideration to approve our board goals for 2025-26, and consider and approve a contract for a third-party administration for employee benefits. So that is our nice, long consent agenda. We did have a workshop, as we always do, we had it yesterday at noon, where we discussed these items, asked questions, and we did talk about them very thoroughly. And if you're interested in getting more details about it, just look online under our meetings, and you'll see all the agenda items that are listed a little bit more in detail, so you can tell more about what's going on if you do that. Or come to our noon workshop meeting on Mondays. It's up to you which way to do it. We try to make our public meetings fairly quick, focus on our staff and student recognition, which I think is what we should do, and get our questions answered the day before. We also have some personnel items. Oh, before we do that, we need to make a vote on our consent agenda. Most important.
Madam President, move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Now, just one discussion on the budget amendments, right?
Okay. Before we take a vote. Sure.
Not a big issue, but looking at it, we talked about yesterday about the ban, changing line item accounting from instruments to travel, right? Not an issue. But I also think it's important for us, as a board, to realize, as well as the administration, there is a need for instruments. So if we have to come back to adjust it on a fund balance, then so be it.
Sure. Okay. All right. Anyone else have any discussion at all? If not, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gallin, a second by Mr. Gores. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Under information items, even though this isn't really listed right here in our information items, we do have a candidate here I just saw for our CTC Board, and I'd like him, if he would, to introduce himself to us.
Hello. I'm Mark Manning, and yes, I am.
A little related.
My husband and I are really, appreciate the opportunity here. I love the cooperation that the school district has with Central Texas College, and I'm a CTC grad, and I got to stay at home and go to school, and I think that let me get through college. So I'm hoping to push that as an avenue for local Coppers Cove students, that they look at CTC long and hard before they go off somewhere. Thank you.
And, Mark, tell us when voting starts.
Early voting is, I believe, the 21st, because it's starting next week, and then April 3rd is the election.
Okay.
So I gave it right up here.
And you're place?
Place three.
Three. Okay. All right. Thank you. I consider that information. I hope you all do, too. Under personnel, we have a list of our new hires for April 2025. We have a list of resignations for instructional personnel and support personnel. Then we have the summer school proposal for 2025. We have the principal reports for all of our campuses, and we have a special services report. All of these are written, the athletics report, the operations report, child nutrition warehouse Oh, under the operations report, we have transportation, child nutrition warehouse report, student services report, safety and security report, and maintenance report. Then we have a technology report, and we have a CCISD Golden Dogs report, and we have the Board of Trustees' calendar for April, May, and June. And there was one item in June that I thought we might look at, well, yeah, SLI. I'm going to have to go to the SLI in San Antonio for a couple of nights. I did kind of a dumb thing and set up our family vacation on the time when we're going to be at SLI, when y'all are going to be at SLI in Fort Worth. So if anybody else decides they would like to go, you know, to San Antonio, then feel free. It's also an option, and it's always that way.
And that's on the 11th, is it?
It is. Yeah.
If you just let us know what the preference is, it's certainly better if everybody can go together.
I'm very disappointed in myself.
I think, you know, from the standpoint of governance and board mechanics, generally the board does a self-evile as a team of eight before that, and then that kind of guides your, directs your course choices that you take there. And so it also allows everybody to kind of divide up and know where everybody's going so that we get the most maximum benefit of the conference. And so Monica and I do whatever pleases the board, but there is the option of going six, going to Fort Worth, and one going to San Antonio, versus seven going to San Antonio, versus kicking the can down the road to board convention. So whatever pleases the board, we're ready to do if you'll just let us know.
And I apologize I did that. I didn't realize it, of course, when I made our vacation plans, and it's kind of a big vacation for our whole family, so it's something I couldn't really change easily, so.
I used to go to the one in San Antonio.
It's good. Okay.
Right, but you just brought up possibility of another.
Of doing it during delegate.
Something else later for all eight of us.
Yeah.
Right? What are those dates? Do we have those?
They're September. I don't have them on me. The board conference is the conference that.
Tasby Conference.
The Tasby School Board, I think they call it EdCon, is the conference that most of the people go to at that point. That is right at the 1st of September, if I'm not mistaken, and I can get you those dates.
Again, another alternative, right? So for all eight, if.
That'd be great.
If able, right?
Yeah.
I've already arranged my schedule for Fort Worth.
All right. Well, maybe he can send stuff out and we can look at it and possibly talk about it. But again, I apologize to y'all. I don't think I've ever done this before, but I did it this time, so. I was trying to work around a whole bunch of other schedules, so.
Send you out an email in the morning with those dates.
Okay.
And just let us know, and we'll get everything squared away.
Thank you. All right. And then we have the tax report, analysis of delinquent taxes and services. And lastly, we have our 2025 Spring NAFIS Conference that several of us went to in March, and so if anyone here that went to that conference would like to report on it to the rest of the board, now's your time.
Well, I'll talk, I think that one of the things that was disappointing this time is that we didn't get to meet with as many representative senators as we have before because they were in special session. I say special session, they were in session discussing the items that were on the floor. But other than that, we got to bond together, we got to go to the Hill and meet with some of the staffers, but this, I think this is the first time I've been that we didn't get to meet with either representative or senator.
I just say, I think it's crucial, advocacy is crucial on every level, and even when we're all wearing purple shirts tonight, and those military students, we have to advocate, impacted students, we have to advocate on their behalf, absolutely. And so while we didn't meet with Representative Carter, I did reach out to his office and put some things in writing of needs for what I felt like would benefit the kids of Coppers Cove and those families, certainly, who serve and make the sacrifices that they do. But I just, I think that, you know, moving forward, we're in a state of public education that advocacy has never been less important, more important. Right now, it is crucial that not only we engage, but our community engages. but our community engages and speaks as a unified voice that what we do is important, that our kids are important, that we serve in a very much underfunded, overregulated, and commonly attacked profession. And it impacts our students and our staff. And, you know, if things don't change, you know, I've got a granddaughter that I don't know who's going to be there to teach if things don't change. And so we've got some things that are broke. They're not broke because of the educators. They're broke because of people who were fixing them on different levels that are far away from the classroom. And so advocacy at all levels, we have to do a much better job. Even us educators, it's crucial that we do not allow our jobs to focus us just on the things that we really had a calling for and went to preparation for, and that's teach. Now we have to be, one other hat we have to wear is that of advocacy. So I definitely had a good trip to Washington, and I think that it's something that, you know, we got to continue to hammer is that the military impact aid has gone down, and that is a shame. Our kids still have the same need that they had five years ago, 15 years ago, and we ought to be funding those kiddos more today than ever because those military homes are impacted by inflation, as you know, so.
Madam President, one other thing I think is so important. We have been told multiple occasions that representatives and senators want to hear from the elected officials. They said the employed officials are there, and they advocate, but said the elected officials are the ones that they want to hear from. That's why it's so important that we, as a board, go to represent our community, our students. We have dropped significantly regarding the amount of money we receive, but when you think about $300,000, that's still a lot of money that we get because of that. And if we ever go back up to heavy impact today, then we could come back up another $13 to $15 million. So it is important that we, as board members, attend to let our elected officials know that we, as elected officials, support their funding of our federally impacted students.
I was thinking along the same lines as Mike was just saying, especially in this, you know, there's a lot changing out there in Washington, D.C., as you know. And some of the talk that we heard was, you know, fear of losing the Education Department, et cetera. Although some of us, like Dr. Hawkins, if you've read anything in the paper or seen any of what he believes, he's not real afraid of it because the local people are the ones that should be impacting our districts and not the ones that don't know what's going on in D.C. So that part's not really scary. But I have the feeling that maybe over the next few years, the impact aid program itself may change a lot. And one thing that some of us have talked about often are the crazy formulas that, if you've ever looked at the impact aid formulas, that heavy impact aid has to abide by. So many districts are, you know, dropping out of heavy impact aid. And you wouldn't think that in Colleen or Copper's Cove, they could possibly drop out of heavy impact aid, but we have. And so we think that there are ways that things will change where our children will all be served the way they should be in this area. And we're hoping, and that's why we go advocate, no other reason, is that we've got to keep our faces known. And so that's why we go to these meetings. And I believe that as a board, we feel like it's an important thing to do.
I just want to second everything that you and Mike said. It's very important for us to.
It's very important for us to advocate, and it's very important for us, as elected officials, to be the ones to advocate. And we just can't stress that enough. Our military kids deserve to have the education they want as well, and it helps all of our students. But the money is there for the military kids, and we have military kids as well. The formulas just don't make sense.
And a lot of times, those elected officials come to us, too. And it's still important to meet with them locally. I know that Ted Cruz came down here in October, and then the governor was here recently in Gatesville. So it's important to go to those local events, too, to talk to them.
And some of us were there when we could be, so, yeah.
So just a question for those that went. I mean, I don't think it's so a surprise that our elected representatives weren't there, right? Lot of things going on. But I would like to know, I mean, sure, we didn't see our elected representatives. Again, not a surprise, especially.
But we did talk to staff members.
Yeah, so that's a question. Did we, you know? I think it's important to understand that engaging, because those folks are not the ones lifting the water, right? They're not the ones doing the heavy lifting. It's the PSMs on the congressional side of the House that do all, right? The chiefs of staff, et cetera. So gaining those insights, as well as those points of contact from somebody that's done it for more than a couple of years, that's what's important.
Right. And that's what, and we did see them, for sure.
That's awesome.
And as Jeff pointed out, I think one of the things that I've learned from going there is that when you talk to representatives, they're going to generally vote, well, and the senators, the way that their staff tells them. Because the staff is the one that does the research on the different topics and the different ideas. And so they make the recommendations to the senators and to the representatives. And if you weren't aware of that, that's really what goes on. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Jeff.
All right. So we are looking at staff contracts a little bit later. But if anybody here would like to go into a closed session.
We have one question about the new hires. Is it on the information side of the House?
Okay.
We got, there's three athletic coordinators that were just hired. Were two of those promotions?
No, they're new hires. We released some folks out of their contracts, and so we hired some folks in.
Okay.
To those positions.
Yep.
The ones that we had went to other districts.
Thank you.
Was there anything else with the contracts that anybody needed to know? Okay, so I don't think we need to go into a closed meeting. I wanted to mention tonight that the students videoing tonight are Deanne Mendiola, right, and Evelyn Stack. And you're from Ms., how do you say her name? You're from Cyphert? Okay, Ms. Cyphert's class. We appreciate you being here. Are you learning a lot? Yeah? Okay. Good. Thank you for coming. All right. Since we don't need to go into closed session, we'll go ahead and consider and approve renewing administration staff contracts for 2025-2026 school year. Again, any questions before we vote, before we take a motion?
One, I realized that, you know, well, I saw today that we made some adjustments regarding the conversation yesterday, right? But for clarification, I'm still kind of fuzzy about the whole term and probationary aspect of it because we have three new positions that, looking at the policy, should be probationary, but to elicit its term.
Yeah, so the EDCode allows for, if you serve a year, you can serve a year on probation. However, those things have changed in that due to District of Innovation or those kind of things, you don't have to hire everybody on probation. You can hire people on term contracts. For an example, in January the 14th, you hired me, and that was on a term contract.
It was? I thought it was probation.
Oh, no, 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 no. But so there's general guidelines of if you have not been in that position in the state of Texas in five out of the eight years, then you go through a probationary period. But a few years ago, that changed to where you don't even have to extend probation in the principal contracts and above, just if they have experience, and you determine that as an experienced person in the state.
So it's subjective?
Yes.
Right? Because, I mean, we have a new, you know, the dean of students, right, who we haven't had, is a term, right? Is a term.
The dean of students is a person that has already been here, though.
Okay. But we have other people.
Yeah, that's been here three years.
And I believe the other term contracts are experienced people, right?
They are.
Yeah.
And that dean of students has a job, too. There'll be a resignation coming.
Oh, he has a different job?
That's fine. Again, I just want to clarify because we had the discussion yesterday talking about new to the district, number of years, three out of eight, five out of eight, whatever the case may be. And now we have three relatively new hires, new position, and they're term. Bottom line up front, it's subjective.
It is. The state allowed that because they wanted districts to be able to recruit people in other areas of the state. If I'm sitting in another district somewhere, and I'm on a term contract, and you say, hey, come to Copper's Cove, I don't want to go through that probationary deal again. So that's why you saw some of those things changed, to allow districts to be able to recruit better, people who are experienced into your district.
Does that answer it for you? Any other questions there?
Now, yesterday at the workshop, we talked about the Fine Arts Director, and it's not on tonight's agenda.
No. Because I, well, okay, this was just my understanding. I understood that because we're focusing on fine arts in our goals, that that's going to be something that Dr. Hawkins brings us. You know, I say this often, and I'm not saying, because I'm not the oldest one on this board, but I've been doing it a long time. And never in 30 years has a board member brought a staff recommendation for the time I've been on this board. The superintendent brings the staff recommendations. And I believe that we're here, we hired our superintendent. We need to trust him to do it at the proper time. And so that's why it's not on the agenda to vote on tonight. And I believe Mr. Gallin pretty much said the same thing yesterday during our workshop, that we're a governing board, we're not in-the-weeds board, and we don't want to start being that way. That's my feeling. I'm one board member. But I'm leaving it to Dr. Hawkins to bring that recommendation at the proper time.
And I echo that. Number one, the governance process is you define a goal on April the 8th. And from that goal, then, as I stated yesterday, I will bring you options in the month of May in which you can select from and choose from. That's quality governance and the way that governance works. You know, technically, you can't hire without the recommendation of the superintendent. So both of those things have to work together. It's like a toe-sack race. Those goals are one of the most important things that we've done since January, since I've been here, January 14th. That provides direction to the administrative staff of the things that you want to see accomplished in this district. And so once you have adopted those goals here tonight, then the next step is to bring the bills because everything comes with a price. And so we'll have to look through and see what things that we want to do and to what level that we want to do them as far as those goals. And so the staff and I will have to work through that process and bring all those things as expeditiously as we possibly can. That's effective governance, and that's the way that it's supposed to work. And in the end, I think we will all meet the objectives and the targets that we're trying to reach.
Well, I'm going to step in here, right? Because I wasn't so concerned, the fact that it's not on the agenda. We talked about it yesterday. Two things draw me concern as a board. Just because we haven't done it for the last 30 years doesn't make it right. Doesn't make it.
It does make it right. It does make it right. I'll argue that with you till the cows come home, Jeff.
Okay, well, I'll argue the fact that we're a violation of our SOP because more than two staff members have asked it for to be on the agenda.
It's been on the agenda, as you've seen.
No, no, it's been on the agenda for discussion. It's not been on the agenda for consideration to vote on. The other aspect is, I'll take exception to effective governance. I don't want to draw negativity there, but you have seven elected individuals here that are committed to the oversight and governance of the district and what's best for the kids. The director of fine arts has not been anything new. It has been in discussion for several years. For several years. We have our objectives, right? We have our goals. I got it. I signed off on it. I'm pleased with it. But the fact that we're not doing it just because we haven't done it in the past, I draw exception to it. I also draw exception to the fact of the opinion of what effective governance is.
So then, we've been discussing this for several years, so if I'm able to bring you those recommendations in May, that's pretty good, huh?
I concur. Absolutely. I'm okay with it.
Just making sure we're on the same page. Y'all, I think we can do that. But I'm telling you that that's the processes and the way that things are set up to work. I mean, you can call TEA, Lone Star Governance Training. I've been through thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of Lone Star Governance Training. And that is an input. The input is what the superintendent and administration brings to the board. And then the board holds me accountable to the outcomes of that input. And so that's the whole flow and the process of that. And I'll be glad to, we can set up Lone Star Governance Training and go through that so that we can get better as a board and better as a team. But I just, I think, you know, that we've got a lot of dynamics moving. And I think in the month of May that we'll bring some of those things to closure. And I think that you'll have, I hope you have reason to be happy at that point, because we've accomplished the part of the goal.
In the correct way.
And the only employee that we have as a board is a superintendent. We hire the superintendent to manage and to run the district, and he answers to us. But he makes the recommendations, and then we approve or not approve those recommendations. But he is the day-to-day manager, and he's our only employee.
Well, I was one of the two that requested that it be put on an agenda. And I think I made it clear in my email that it be put on a board agenda, not a workshop agenda. And I also read in the board operating policies, which I've read several times, that if those two board members request that, that you have to put it on the agenda and that the president cannot decide to remove that item from the agenda. So I still want to see it on the agenda to discuss. And May's fine, but we went through the correct procedure to have it on the agenda, and I want it on the agenda.
It's, I did not remove anything. Did I, Dr. Hawkins? I never removed anything. So I don't appreciate being accused of that because I did not do that. To say that I didn't put it on there, you're right. Because what I just said to start this discussion was that it would not be proper for any board, anywhere, to bring that without the superintendent okaying it and putting it on the agenda. So that's why it hasn't been on there. It wasn't against any board members at all. I never took anything off of a meeting. We, Dr. Hawkins and I discussed it. We did discuss it. We didn't put it on except for discussion, because that was the proper way to do it, not to put it on for a vote. It's not the board's business to bring up staff members nomination or whatever you want to call it, recommendations. It is the superintendent's business. And Dr. Hawkins is exactly right when he told us what he told us. He's our only person that we hire or fire. And I think that's well-known in the state of Texas. And it's not anything that is new or anything that I was trying or he was trying to keep us from doing, is just doing things at the proper time in the proper way. We are going to continue to do that the right way, as I think a majority of the board believes. If you could have heard what John said yesterday, he said the same thing I'm saying right now. Mike said it. I believe there are other board members that believe the same way. We all believe that fine arts is top, and we all love the fine arts. As y'all know, if you heard any discussion about the goals that we made, I mentioned right away that I felt terrible that we took art out of our elementary schools 30 years ago. We basically, we had art teachers in our elementary schools. And because of financial constraints at that time, we took them out. We left music there, but we took art out. And so we're going to try to get some things like that back into our elementary schools. So we're working on that, and we're working on a Fine Arts Director, as all of us have talked to Dr. Hawkins about. And so I think we just sometimes have to be a little more patient than some of us want to be to see things happen. So if there's no more discussion on that, if there is, yes, John, sure.
It's on. I thought we put this to bed yesterday, that there was tacit agreement. We had the briefing on the staffing, and we were talking about staff. And this is a staff member that we're talking about, creating a staff, another staff member in the district. And there was sort of tacit agreement that, one, and Jeff had brought it up, there was not a job description, but that's easily taken care of by our HR director. They can Google it. There's stuff online to do that. And of course, there's AI, too, which will create stuff for you, I'm sure. But I thought we sort of put it to bed and threw it in Dr. Hawkins' court, that he would come back with a recommendation in May for staffing, that being one of the issues as far as staffing is concerned. And I think we need to accept that, and next month, it's going to be on the agenda. Regardless of whether it's on the agenda tonight or not, is inconsequential, personally, I think. Yeah, it's, we sort of violated that because we had two members say it. It was on the workshop agenda, but I thought we had a tacit agreement, though, at the workshop that we threw it in his court. And that I thought it was done at that point, and that we were going to get a report and a recommendation in May, Jeff. That's what I thought. That's my...
Well, one, John, I didn't start the conversation, right? I'm commenting.
I understand. You know, I know that.
I didn't start the conversation. You brought, you continue to go down to tacit, right? One, it was not committed to in May. It was not...
I thought it was, that we were going to get a report on the staffing report, a recommendation.
That was my understanding. That was what I left, and I felt that the consensus of the board had given me direction to do.
I'm just going to, you know, comment on procedures, right? Because we're supposed to be following procedures and policy. That's what governance is all about. I'm going to make the recommendation that we review our SOP and change it. Because evidently, given the current environment, I'm going to ask, Dr. Hawkins, is there any reason for a board member to bring anything for on the agenda?
Say that again.
Is there any reason, due cause, due course, concern in which a board member should bring to the attention of the district to place on the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because evidently, we haven't done it in 30 years.
No, I didn't say that. I said staff recommendation is what I, that's exactly what I said.
So here would be an example. For an example, board member drives by and sees water running from a faucet on one of the elementary campuses, is concerned about water conservation, brings it up at a meeting, hey, I'd like to see a report from the administration on water consumption in the district. Board member seconds that, goes to Ms. Manning. Ms. Manning and I to craft the agenda. We put on their consideration to direct the superintendent to give a report on water consumption. That's placed on as an action item, and then voted on at the meeting after a duly posted agenda in 72 hours. And then superintendent works with operations, as well as the finance department to pull two years' worth of bills and do that. That's a viable thing, if I answered your question.
Yeah, I was just looking for, you know, obviously subjective, right? So I'm looking for examples on it. And I think, you know, maybe we address that in the SOP going forward.
Staff, staff recommendations is what I was talking about, and that's all I said.
Yes, ma'am.
You remember what I said?
Yep.
Okay. We have had many, many board ideas that have been put on the agenda through the years that I've been board president. And I have no problem with people talking to me day in and day out about anything they think that would be smart to put on our agenda. And I'll go right to Dr. Hawkins and talk to him. I don't decide that on my own. I remember one time when I took something to the board president, one of the first years I was on the board, and he just politely told me, I'm not putting it on the agenda. And he was probably right about it. It didn't have anything to do with a staff member, but it was something that I thought was important. And he just politely said, no, Joan, I'm not putting that on the agenda. And I said, okay. So things like that do happen. I've never told anybody that it couldn't be on, there couldn't be on there. But I did find it highly unusual for a board member to recommend a staff position. Yes.
I'll give another example. This one is real life, is since I've been here. Those two cameras in the back corner over there with those young ladies on them, that is not anything that has to be placed on an agenda. That is a management function of Copper's Cove ISD. And so the board does not have to create policy in order to have that function to happen. And so I had at least two board members ask me, said, hey, what can we do to do this? Can we have this placed on an agenda as part of the board operating procedures? I said, it's part of the board operating procedures, but that's not what the board does. Y'all, I've heard your concern. That's my problem. And so let me address that. And so that's how that worked in that regard. And so that's an example that I'm just thinking through in my head.
It is, and I appreciate that, because even before you came, right after I was elected, I asked, could we start the recordings of the meetings, the workshop, and the regular board meetings? And I was told by Madam President, let's wait until the new superintendent gets here. And as soon as you got here, you took care of that. And thank you so much. I get so many messages and emails and texts that people are happy about the recordings, and they can't wait till they're uploaded so that they can see the meetings, if they can't make the workshop or the regular meetings. So I do thank you for taking care of that. Thank you so much.
And I went straight to him and told him about that. And I do that with every board member here. I try as hard as I can to be a good board president and to do what y'all think is right, as long as it doesn't affect our job as a governing board, because that's what we are. And I don't want to be the kind of board that fights and argues and has bad blood between us. We've never, we've never had that as a board, and I don't want to start that. I want to get along with everybody here, and I try my best to do that. And I hope you know that. I love every one of you. And we can have discussions and, you know, see things differently and still get along for the best for this district and do the right things by our kids. And that's all I'm here for. It's all I've ever been here for. And I believe every one of you feels the same way, that you're here for these kids and for our staff members to do the right thing for them. So I don't want to get into a tit and tat about what the board operating procedures say or whatever, the way you might interpret it, the way I might interpret it. Let's try to get along for the good of this district.
And I would second that. I just say that at the end of all of this tonight, we're still relatively new as a team. And so when you have a team, when you start working, the longer you work together, the more chemistry that you have. And I think that some things is just going to take some time to work through some things, to build some trust, to ensure that there are some accomplishments and goals along the way that we check off. But at the end of the day, it truly is a TOSAC race, and there's a tick under 8,000 kids that depend on us to get it right. A whole lot of staff members in this community depends on us to get it right. And so I have every ounce of confidence that we'll do that as long as that we can remember what we're here for and those things that are most important. Y'all just voted on them, and those are those goals. And so we've got to focus on those and making sure that we attain those for the students so that we can make an impact on those we serve.
All right. Anything else before we vote our last two items? So we'll consider an approved to renew our administrative staff contracts for 2025-2026 school year. Any further discussion on those items? If not, I'd like a motion if I could.
Madam President, I move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilburn, a second by Mr. Trager. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next, we'll consider an approved renewing of the professional staff contracts for the 2025-2026 school year. Any discussion on any of those contracts at all? If not, I entertain a motion on that item.
So move, Madam President?
I'll second it. We have a motion by Mr. Gallin, a second by Mrs. Copeland. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Madam President?
Yes.
If you would just bear with me just a second, there's somebody that I hadn't thanked. And that whole two items on that agenda was a whole lot of people doing something different. And I'd just like to thank the principals. I'd like to thank Tracy and HR and all of my cabinet folks who went into getting that done. If you weren't, you know, there's a song about you should have seen it in color. If you weren't there to see it in color, then you don't really grasp the whole amount of work that went into that. I did ask for something to be done different. There was a purpose for asking something to be done different. And that was Tracy had to align our contracts. And so we went through the whole thing to make sure our contracts were audited. We got legal counsel. We got good recommendations on those contracts, so they're all in compliance. We pulled the information out of our management system and put into the Excel spreadsheet where they were double-checked. And so I asked staff to have just a little bit of grace. Your contract is coming, but it's kind of coming the old-fashioned way. And some of you Gen Z'ers may not understand what I'm saying, but it's kind of like it's on Big Chief Tablet, okay? So it's not going to be just the...
They don't know what that is.
I know. The fake signature that it used to be. It'll be actual signatures on that thing, but it will be the contracts that were legally bound and supposed to give out and function the way that they're supposed to function. And so thanks, everybody, for bearing with us to do that. It will get easier each year from this point forward.
I'm such a baby on this board.
You didn't have a Big Chief Tablet.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn our meeting at 7:59 PM. Y'all have a good rest of your evening, please.